...City of Statesboro City Council meeting. I will ask Councilwoman Phil Boyd if he would lead us in our invocation and pledge allegiance.
May we power ahead? Dear Lord, as we come together today, we give you thanks for the good gifts and opportunities you've bestowed on this community. Be with us and all the school kids that are starting their first week of school and be with the community as we get close to deciding on our new police chief. We ask for your guidance in our lives as we make the decisions that affect the direction of this city and the citizens that live here. And we pray that your love stays with us and helps us lead with compassion as we try to find new leaders for our city and develop solutions to the issues that face our community. In your name we pray. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every hand and every tongue.
Okay, we'll move to agenda three, which is recognition and public presentations. We have a presentation for employee of -- who won't be doing that tonight? Ms. Brandt.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. For this employee, first off, those of you guys that know, as I used to do, employee upper month, we'll do it at employee of the quarter now. And we had many nominees, but this employee stood out because the nominee said that this is why this employee should be employee of the quarter. He is a meter reader that is always a go-getter. He has a can-do attitude. He's never been late around, even after it rains, days of cold spells, days of heat over a hundred degrees or even ninety degrees. He has an attitude of let's go do this. For the past half year, he put, he put the meter readers on his back, carried staff and two others for various reasons beyond his control to get the job done on time with a high degree of accuracy. Not only was he reading meters, but various other tasks as well. As we said, while others, while others were challenged, he is reading, he's, he's reading thousands of extra meters on time. He completes this while dealing with customers of various dispositions, being chased, and sometimes in challenging positions, dealing with different weather situations, fighting through fences, different things, avoiding critters and all, all different types of stuff. He is put in situations where he has to dig in the meter boxes and deal with different situations. He completes all of this and a lot more with a good attitude, no matter if it's in the grueling heat or freezing cold, not only is he completing his routes, but two to four extra routes per cycle, always with accurate readings. He assists Krista Cooper, as you guys know, downstairs in billing with edits and helps with lock offs. He never wavers his loyalty to the job, to any of the staff, and most of all, the city. These are the reasons that we believe that he should be nominated as employee of the quarter. When I say we, I'm talking about his peers who nominated him as employee of the quarter. We're talking about Mr. Ronnie Swin.
Listen, do we have anybody that's signed in to make a public comment? Okay, agenda item five is a consideration of a motion to approve the consent agenda. I will ask Councilors to please read the consent agenda and then ask for motion. Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye. Opposed, consent agenda is considered ready. Agenda item six, second reading and consideration of a motion to approve ordinance two zero one six dash oh six. And that's the ordinance that amends the parking appendix A so that it is all consistent through our ordinances. Yes, sir.
Jason Walz, Director of Public Works Engineering. As presented in the last council meeting, staff detected an error in our diagram, the parking ordinance. And so this is something that seeks to resolve the issue. It just simply, as I say, the last, the last council meeting, it simply changes the stated stallway to nine eight.
If we have no further questions, Mr. Walz, do I have a motion to approve ordinance two zero one six dash one oh six?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Agenda item lucky number seven, second reading and consideration of a motion to approve ordinance two zero one six dash oh seven, which amends section eighty-two seventy of the City of Statesboro Code of Ordinance regarding water and sewer billing. Can I ask Mr. Chishyari to reintroduce this to us today?
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, we've had a lot of discussion on this one, but at the end of the last council meeting, on the first reading, it was requested that I send the resolution, amend the ordinance amendments, proposed amendments, back to you in the same form as the first reading, which I've done and has still my recommendation. What you did ask from the last meeting was that we provide you with some estimates, and they are estimates because it's hard to determine how much somebody could participate in a credit program. But Mr. Walz, Collins did some calculations, and those were all provided to you last week. Just, just, I'll give you just a summary of it. If we utilize the, the language of or, it could be sixty-five or above or, annual income of the poverty level, then with a fifty percent participation based on the percentage from good documentation that Mr. Walz found, from the census of where our poverty rate is, there could be credits in an amount of around a hundred seventy-three thousand dollars plus additional twenty-six thousand dollars in concerted services, administrative fees, which are the ones that help us determine if they meet the criteria should someone submit that credit application. If we utilize, and that, that is for water sewer and sanitation credit, because we are trying to keep it too consistent, I'll say that as well. So out of that one seventy-three, that's a, you'd have roughly sixty-three thousand of water sewer, that would be a water sewer credit, and a hundred ten thousand would be a sanitation credit. If we went with the and, and again, I'm talking, the first number would be, for both the water sewer and sanitation credit together, it would be roughly eleven thousand, so a significant difference if you do the and versus the or. With another sixteen hundred dollars in application fees, which could be a total of twelve to thirteen thousand dollars. Staff's recommendation is still stick with the and to be consistent, and then I would suggest maybe as Councilman Boyd did at the last council meeting, that would be, that wait six months or maybe into that, the budget process of next year, which is usually late winter, January, February, and look at it again, see what kind of participation we're getting even with the and, and then let's just see how it's doing, generate those dollars, again, check our numbers, and see if we want to work that into the budget next year. That'd be my recommendation. Here to discuss it if we need to.
Yeah, that's the fiscally responsible way to go. I mean, if there is a potential two thousand dollar shortfall in the budget, to just spring that on you guys would be probably not the smartest thing to do. Probably look at, see how, see how they pick up concerted services and try to, try to, I think, I mean, I'm not being the speaker everybody, but I think we're all of the same mind that we want to try to go towards an or, but I think planning for it is the smartest way to do it.
So what you're saying, just to be clear, is to say that sixty-five and meet the criteria?
Low-income seniors to start with, and then expand it to low-income or seniors for two thousand eighteen.
Are you proposing to do that and go back into discussions on this during the budget, budget discussions in March and April? And then it would be effective whatever, if there was a change, that would be effective fiscal year two thousand eighteen?
Next July.
Okay.
And I would say that probably should be a budget assumption for two thousand eighteen. Maybe we put it in there, even if it gets modified or something, let's, let's start with that as a budget assumption that we're going to do it, working or, and how you guys can calculate that.
Yeah.
I like the fact that, as Boyd said, the fact that or would be ideal. I would keep it planned for the rest of the state at this time, but I'm planning, so I have to agree that the fact that sixty-five and poverty, that would be the way to go at this time.
I agree.
Any further discussion from Council? If not, then I'll ask for a motion to approve ordinance two zero one six zero seven.
So moved.
As it reads. Do you still have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Agenda item A, consideration for motion to approve resolution two zero one six dash thirty-two, which is a resolution to adopt our schedule of fees, rates, and fines. Robert.
Really, all this is, is eight was on there to follow up seven, and we've all agreed that the schedule of fees, rates, and fines is the best and most convenient, and I think the easiest for public to find information is, anytime we update a rate or a fee or a fine, we change it in here. In this case, what this is doing is putting under the water sewer credit, we've already got the one for sanitation. It puts under your water sewer credit at the two dollar, but if you're in San Jose, four dollar, if you're outside of the city. So that's all we're approving to change today is schedule of fees, rates, and fines.
Do we have any questions for Robert at this time? Any discussion? Okay, in that case, so I have a motion to approve resolution two zero one six dash thirty-two.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Agenda item nine, consideration of a motion to afford contract to the lowest quota of BRW in the amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand eight hundred ninety dollars for the construction of a concrete slab for the burnet line equipment. Man.
You now recall last council meeting, I brought before you the contract for the skater and installation. I had the budget money for that, getting another project, definitely pay for it. And also make you aware at the time that I'd be back before you with two other items that I had did not budget for, the slab, which felt like we could do in-house until we figured out the calculations and had, I think they'll be young, as I had to do HDP to go to EPD. It was a lot more complex than we had anticipated, and that's why the cost is so much. It went from a fourteen to twenty-four slab to twenty to thirty slab, because it's got a heavy containment, so we got to foot curving all the way around it in case we had any spillage of the line itself. Also, it's a complex rebar and rebar tying, so my staff's not capable of doing that. The equipment, Burnet Line Company has equipment ready to be delivered in contract reads if we start making payments, police payments, once the equipment is installed, which we're holding down right now. We didn't feel we had time to do the, do the process. So yeah, Chris Burke, let's see, a thousand euros, we get on phone with contractors, we thought we could get it close to twenty thousand, but we weren't able to. And also, I'm asking to reallocate funds from two other projects that will cover the funding of the slab, the electrical installation, and also the engineering costs. I was planning on covering the engineering costs out of operating, but it would benefit me greatly because we've got a lot of issues we've got to deal with, the engineers, home and water treatment plant, such as the U D system, the buildings, so we'll probably need that operating, not the engineering, the bathroom, the individual services until we get into the proposal part of that shit. That's quite a ask that you consider.
So assuming that this is, this would be approved, when are you going for that slab?
What's that?
When are you planning on forming a slab?
Chris Burke, HDP said, if BRW has a crew here in Statesboro, so they should probably get on pretty quick. Once you approve this, I'm going to get on the phone with Chris and see how quickly we can get in here. Of course, I know we're going to have out of contract, so that shouldn't take long to put together and have you execute it as quickly as possible, and then get started. Hopefully, in that week, we can add. Once it's installed, well, beginning to end, between set equipment, probably four or six weeks, you have about fourteen to a year time with concrete itself, the, just the chemical on, it goes in the tank, will be installed like fifteen, excuse me, a hundred fifty thousand pounds, and when I calculate that and do it through EPD, I guess the slab is a little more than we can conquer ourselves. And electrical, we've got four contractors right now, they're as close, if we get them below twenty, when Robert is approved, approved above twenty thousand, not when we're really on the process, that's the time is not of the importance as the slab is, because we can actually install this equipment around the angle, we're doing a lot of the demo units now, and run it, either on P H or floodface, once we get the scale, they're all here.
So the demo unit's carrying us until this content is set up, basically?
Normally, their demo time period's two weeks of being that I pursued going ahead and get the police agreement approved by you guys, they, they said they would leave it there with, with the payment, but we've had it sent the first weekend, March, several months, and they're not charging anything other than the cost of the line, and they were charging a little more for the line until we entered in the police purchase agreement, and they dropped the line down from, the line cost down from, I think it was ten cents per pound to five point nine cents per payment, and that's what we'll be paying for their line. And of course, when the lease agreement was approved by you guys, we also approved the line of sole source to Burnet.
So we just gotta hope that demo unit keeps working?
If not, they'll, they'll get that one. We hadn't had any issues at all with it, other than one, the water line actually, plus the line being run fairly, because they have a builder, and our guy went up on a thing and repaired it last week, so that's the only issue we had. And we got two pumps, we're not using one, so that one pump, that would have been twenty seconds.
Are you a BRW or any Renfro local?
I'm not sure if BRW or not.
Renfro is. We just tried to get some of the other ones, I just made do a couple of them so we could meet the timeframe.
That's right.
Or just more interested.
Is that gear Russian, White Delta, they didn't submit.
I just wondered whether one hundred and ten dollars is different, is that they are three percent?
I don't think that we do that on projects such as this.
I don't agree.
Is there a?
The only thing you can factor three percent in on is public works labeled projects. That's, that's by the state.
So we just wouldn't comply with that or not?
If it's not public works, yeah.
So it's not a amount, it's whether it's public works related or not?
The only, the thing that allows not to apply are local ordinance for the three percent or if it's labeled public works projects, especially those a hundred thousand and above, that's usually the benchmark. All the other stuff is, you probably should apply the three percent.
They buy a vehicle?
Yes.
And two, the BRW just said they could get to it pretty quick, they had a pretty chance.
So does it follow to the local three percent or not?
I would say yes, it does. We're always, we discussed road projects, and that kicks in at twenty thousand and above, and public works, a hundred thousand and above, so both those honestly probably factor in three percent.
I mean, this is at the water plant, so this is public works.
Well, public works is labeled by the state, it's a, that level of project. That's, that's why you got the thirty-day advertisement and all that stuff, that, that's, that's.
But you said that's over a hundred thousand anyway, right?
For construction type projects, and it also applies to street projects, twenty thousand and above. But so I would, my opinion, you would apply this three percent advantage to this.
So if you apply the three percent, that would mean that?
In, in a Renfro.
Would get it.
We get it, and, but they would have to drop their price, and I'm not sure they would, it's not that big of a difference. They don't get a three percent advantage, they just have to get.
You just get the opportunity to match.
So we're like, get it.
Then we give them that opportunity?
I had to talk to him.
Someone got a verbal, says verbal.
We give them a verbal.
Chris Burke's the one that called us next year, they, some of them just gave him a verbal. The only one I've got.
Verbal quote?
Verbal quote.
Okay, so by now, it's a calm, right?
You, you also had Tyson, you told Dad Williams, Kimco, Southern Champion. All this was done real quick.
So if we were going through.
I get it on this agenda.
Right, I understand. So if we were going to do it by policy, Renfro should allow the ability to match.
Long as Derek says that.
To match, yes.
And we haven't given them that, that we're aware of at this time?
The thing we did is we proved with the, with the idea that if, if they match, they get the contract, they use the matching as the next step.
Yeah, that's what'll be clear. Okay, I'd like to clarify that up. Appreciate that.
I just hope they can get on hand and get it done.
Well, we gotta think about this thing. We give them the opportunity to match with, with what caveats, in other words, they got a nice surprise, and what's the timeline that you're gonna establish? Let's, let's, so we're all on the same page, what would that timeline be?
I think we have specs. I mean, we have specs that they all base their price on, whether it's verbal or written there. There's a specification, there's a game belt development, so you want to let you price on, so you give them a statement and say, we want your price in writing if you meet these specs, and we can match that with it if you have to.
And do the specs include the time? We don't have to be.
I don't believe they had anything to do with time.
Well, what you're telling me, man, I'm just asking, because what you're telling me is that the reason that you went, went to these guys was the fact they could do it within a certain timeframe that we're here. So we don't have to make.
They, they could move in pretty quick.
Maybe better question would be, how much, how soon do you need this slab put in?
Yes, sir, ma'am.
I'd love to do.
But I mean, what are you giving BRW, a month, two weeks?
I'm not sure how long, but they did say they had a pretty, they could get on quarter.
We just need to make sure.
Maybe I should have.
We need to make sure whatever we're telling the second one, everybody's got to hear these exact same things, or call them out, say you got two weeks, you got six weeks.
Probably don't be able to quantify that time when we go back to them. I mean, I, I, that's what I'm trying to find out.
The only way we could, if Chris Burke had told them, but given them a timeline, you know, when we need them, because he knew the order, he missed that.
So we don't really know what they call Renfro, we just don't know, because we didn't, we weren't involved in that discussion. I say we mean you.
Well, if they can't meet time, it's right, so they just go. Well, yeah, we can eat price, but if it takes too much longer, we're saying the hundred ten dollars.
I know, what I'm saying is, if he can't meet time and price.
Yes, okay.
And we could put a timeline, begin in two weeks.
That's all we get.
He said they can't, then we'll go back to BRW and make sure, see if that can get us in two weeks.
I don't have an issue with that, as long as you just come up with something.
There we go.
Okay. Fair enough, all right. Thank you, man.
I hate to come to you and ask them the problems, but like, so we were planning on our portion of business until, until we did the calculations and we had to do it after the EPD, the work, and this would have been definitely correct.
Okay, so let's come up with a motion for this. So I'm gonna work, let's just see, okay, so they have a motion to award contract to the lowest quota not to exceed twenty-four thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars to be offered locally to Renfro first to match price and predetermined timeline, if not to go to BRW. Do I have a motion?
What's the predetermined timeline?
That would be determined.
Whatever they determine.
Whatever they determine by. I'm not gonna get on them about two weeks or three weeks. Predetermined timeline by Van Collins and Darren Rayther. Is that fair enough? Okay. For the construction of a concrete slab for the Burnet line equipment to be installed.
So moved.
Do you have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay. Agenda item ten, other business from City Council. Does anybody have anything to add to that statement?
I do. We can have, go ahead and ride along with A P L, please, Paul. It could last pretty long. Anyway, with A P L, Kyle Brownlee, and Officer Rio, with Herb Shipp. First want to say that that's kind of forty hour a week job, that is a three sixty-five, twenty-four seven, for as long as you're over that, that's always part of your family. I don't see how it does when you got to, they, that job is very risky. Taught me a lot about what he, what, what he and the drug dog do. The most interesting thing that I did was using the use of force, I think it's the use of force. It's got a big screen. I'd say about twenty feet wide, about fif, about twelve feet tall. It's got fifty thousand scenarios where you have to use your judgment on whether or not to use force or deadly force. You have two pistols you could use, you have AR-15 that you could use, and you have your taser gun, which you also, I did get used to that, but. About the four scenarios that I went through, I got three out of four, which still means I'm dead. Just, just let you tell what these guys go through. Every time they pull up behind a car, they never know. And I did along with A P L, Brownlee, and I think he got, I think he did, he did everything he was supposed to, but anyway, like I said, I did only three out of four. I was gonna say, I encourage anybody to go up there and ask if you can do that, especially Council, see what these guys are, and Mayor, and see what these guys go through. You need community leaders, I'm sure you can call Chief Bryant, he can set something up for you. But you think it's a video game, got fun for them for a little bit, until you get shot, and then, I mean, for, you're dead. It really opens your eyes, really opens your eyes. opens your eyes. From what I understand, they also have a pellet gun, and if you really do get shot, they shoot you with a pellet, so that's some other reinforcement for you. Luckily, they didn't turn that on for me. But I just want to encourage anybody to, uh, to like to know what, uh, PD goes through every day, every, every stop, every time they get in their car, every time they put a weapon on them, or see if they may have used it that day. And, uh, anyone who'd like to try it, please call, call the chief, say I have something up.
Thank you.
You know, you said that, John, and I was gonna bring up a couple things, uh, obviously there's been a lot, uh, going on with the police chief hiring, and I just want to thank, um, Rob Bryan for his service as general chief, and you know, it, it, it takes a special person to say, uh, and I said this publicly, but I'll say it again, because I think it's that important, it takes a special person to say, I don't necessarily, am not the right person at this time for this job, that, you know, it may be somebody else's turn and my turn later, and to recognize that, so I thank you for your leadership. I also want to say a couple of things that, um, that Chief Brian has done during his tenure, uh, the backpack giveaway that was held, unfortunately I was out of town, I didn't want to be there, but I did get some pencils donated, that Mrs. Ed Holloway did Saturday a week ago, which had over a thousand kids there, people total, uh, was a wonderful event, and the police department was able to grill hot dogs and hamburgers and serve folks, and, you know, I know that they're having problems all around the country, but, and I'm not going to sit here and say that we're perfect to avoid the problems, or avoid our own issues or those kinds of things, but I really do feel in my heart and hearts that our police department is sincere about their concern for our citizens, and they're sincere in wanting to do the right thing, and they're sincere in their service, and I think we're very blessed to have, um, having said that, I'll tell you another thing that, um, that Chief Brian did, um, you know, I've worked with the Concerned Clergy and now since I got elected, and Chief Brian also works with the Concerned Clergy, and he's gonna have a special, it'll be in the papers, not now, you know, they send out fresh releases as the year of witness time goes on, um, but I'm assuming you'll see something about this in the paper, I hope we did, that the Citizens Police Academy, which has been very successful, um, in letting folks know, like, um, Houseman Ray said, what these folks go through on a daily basis, uh, he's gonna have a special Citizens Police Academy for clergy, and I think that's so important and very insightful, because the clergy in our community, um, probably gets in front of more people every week than anybody else, and if they're able to take that message back, that, you know, there are two sides to this story, and we gotta figure out how to make it work, and make it work right for everybody that lives here, I think that's a tremendous step, and I think you're talking about during that beginning sometime, we're talking August fifteenth?
August fifteenth will be the first day, the remaining four weeks will be on Tuesday.
Right, and the Concerned Clergy will, uh, be a big part of this, and maybe already eighteen or twenty folks or someone that are interested in going through this, and, um, I, I think it was a great idea, I give you full credit, I think it was your idea from the get-go, and I'm not gonna try to claim it, I won't anyway, but, um, it just goes to show that we're a community with a heart, and we're a community that cares, and we have to remember that, and I'm just, I'm very thrilled about that, I think that'll go a very, very long way into bringing understanding of everybody, of the boots that everybody walks in every day, so that's enough about that, but I just want to say thank you, um, for your service, thank you for thinking about things like that, because they do make a difference. That's all I have, does anyone have anything else, or I'll turn it over to our city manager. You know, you only get to do this, this time or next time, right?
Yeah.
So, so where are you gonna be sitting? Tell us, uh, so, right there at that empty seat?
I've got it all set up.
All right.
I've got just a few items. Rob, did you have anything else to say about?
Uh, the clergy one, if anyone has any contact with any clergy, we're taking applications for it now, but for class will be August fifteenth, uh, our fall Citizens Police Academy for all citizens, uh, we're taking applications for it all sudden, and it will start, uh, September twentieth, and go to December thirteenth. Uh, both of those programs are advertised on our Facebook page, and we will be putting the fresh release out, and if, so if you have anybody you'd like to recommend, or anyone yet to like fifteen, uh, we'll be up for it.
And they will do that similar.
Yes, they can. So churches will go through the same way.
Don't shoot them, seriously, don't shoot Dallas out.
We save that for our guests.
Okay.
I've got just a few other brief items, um, I have been talking with the city manager, Randy Whitmore, on a regular basis, um, really, I really like him, I think he's gonna be a great selection, and he's, um, I'm trying to, he's asked a lot of good questions, I bring him up to speed on everything from the budget to the hires, obviously he's very involved in chief of police search, he's got all the information so far, and along the same lines, as far as the chief of police search goes, as you can imagine, there's a lot of opinions out there, it's a critical position, and you as council will hear a lot of things, I'm hearing lots of things, and, and it's the right thing, it's good, it's a process, and it's, uh, we're trying our best to be transparent, so that everybody has that opportunity to voice their, their opinion and concerns, and some I'm hearing are concerns, because nowadays, obviously, you can gather a lot of information in a short period of time, and that's fine, uh, I would just ask that you stay open-minded and know there's two sides to every story, and I'm sure Al is very accurate, and he really is in his information, but just give the process a chance, let the vetting process go through, which is everything from the first panel, which has already been, and gotten us to the finalists, uh, they're going through a full background check now, which has not been completed, and we will get that report, I think, by the end of this week, the company here, we utilize, and it's, it's very, uh, very well established, has good ref, good, uh, good references, and on their checking, candidates third, and then there's a second panel, it's made up of public, and they'll be meet and greets, and then there'll be, uh, candidates will meet their partner, yes, candidates will all meet the, the police officers themselves, so there's a, it's a whole process, and I just hope that everybody will be professional, I'm sure that this, um, our community can look at something and can make the right decisions in the end, and that we'll give this process an opportunity to come to fruition in the background, keep everything special if we can, and let's let it shake out of our face, and it's gonna be a right choice, we got good candidates in there, I got no doubt in my mind that the final choice is gonna make it, and it's gonna be what we need for the community, just like we did with the city manager, so that's all I want to add on that, uh, people to just hold their opinions and gather them, let's get through the process before you form a, a full opinion. And the last thing I got to do is, uh, back to another new position, and that's the new director of planning and development, before I introduce Frank, I want to commend and thank Jason Boyle, who sat in as interim for roughly three-month period, did an excellent job, he seems to be the person that I plug into a lot of places when needed, and, um, he's had a lot on his plate, he's tired, and I know he's glad Frank is here, and Frank, uh, he's doing a great job. Frank Neal has started last, last week, week before, last week, week before, and, uh, Frank actually worked with the city in the past, he's got a great background in planning, he also has a construction background, he's got an EBA from Georgia Southern, uh, many, many years of experience, his last experience has been in Grove Town, around Augusta, for roughly four years, as their planning director, which is also, uh, permitting, co-compliance, grants, really the exact same thing that he's doing here. So he's come in, hit the ground running, doesn't really have a big learning curve, other than see, well, how our ordinances and policies are different from the other places he's been, but other than that, he has gotten up to speed very quickly, and I think, uh, that's a relief to Jason, and a relief to me, and he's gonna do a great job, so I'm real pleased to have him here. You want to add anything, Frank?
Just thanking him before we work on everyone, and glad to be here. Have you?
Thanks, Ray. And that's, um, that's all I got.
I'll tell you about Jason, I was coming home a couple of weeks ago from church, it's about twelve thirty, I'm driving down Fair Road, across from Pimper Park, you know, it's that long area between Chandler and wherever the road is, it goes, and by Haven Field House, biggest deer on the side of the road is dead, on the sidewalk, I know it was weird, so I didn't know what to do, so I called Jason, I left a message, I said, I have no idea who needs to haul this deer off, but it's hanging out in the road, just across creek, so I get a text back, he goes, took care of it, I was also, just took care of it, so I don't know who to call in that situation, but if all else fails, call Jason Boyle. I know you're glad to hear that.
We're gonna smoke a deer jerky, you read.
It didn't look real stiff, I don't, it just got a little there, I don't know, that's first, I mean, I don't know, anyway, you know, I don't know. Okay, uh, Ms. Sue, is anybody registered to make a public comment? Okay, in that case, do I have a consideration of a motion to enter into executive session to discuss personnel matters?
A movement.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.